I don't see Brett anywhere.
Yeah, I don't see Brent yet either.
Well, we have other things to talk about.
Yep, okay. Well, we'll start. We'll see if he jumps in here. I'd like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 at 7:05 PM. First order on the agenda, or first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We've just got one set, October 10th, 2022. I know that most people had a chance to chime in, so thank you for the revisions and edits. Did anybody have anything else they wanted to change or edit to them?
I move that we accept the minutes of October 10th, 2022 as amended.
Motion by Lisa. Second, Laura Rine. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. So, oh, I will mention, because again, we're like hybrid back in person now. If you do have a cell phone, please make sure it's silenced. Yes, it is at this point. So, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a chance for anyone to bring up anything from the public that isn't already going to be discussed on the agenda tonight.
I'm Carla Orso. I am here as a conservative.
Hey, Carla.
Hi, Karen. How are you all? It's, um, likely dry. This will be my last planning meeting that I attend for the year, so I just want to take this public comment period to get on my soapbox. And I wanted to talk to you about the relationship between zoning and the housing crisis. As you are all aware, townhouse hammary real estate is an expensive proposition. Townhouse hammary has, you know, a lack of affordable housing and a lack of workforce housing. It's an ongoing problem. It has a variety of causes. We have high real estate taxes. We have some other places we can't change. But one relationship between the housing crisis in the United States is our zoning laws. And the relationship is such that when you come into a place like the Village of Lansing, you say, "Okay, great. This is pastoral. This has, you know, a little bit of smarter field areas. It also has, you know, an excellent mixed use area. I'm going to move here." And then the people who move here then are the people who are on the planning board and on the board committees and then control what happens in zoning. Because in New York State, you know, zoning is primarily at the local level. So, we have an opportunity on occasion to help with the housing crisis through our zoning laws. And we have such an opportunity that's coming up. So, I raise this issue because I'm thinking about when the sewer line goes in on Kila Heights Road, suddenly lots that were zoned, that are zoned for a certain size can be made smaller. And I don't know whether the best thing is to immediately change the law or not. But what I want to raise tonight and have you guys consider is that maybe we have an opportunity here to think about density as a solution to providing housing and not just immediately think, "Okay, this area has always had lot sizes of X. Now they can have lot sizes that are slightly smaller. We need to fix that right away." Before we jump to fix that and maybe we consider that this is an opportunity where there could be some more housing put in and we could... The smaller the lot size, the more affordable the housing. So, maybe we have an opportunity here to create an area where there is some more affordable housing. And maybe not, but I just don't want the position to be, "Okay, now that the sewer line has gone in, immediately more people can build here. Let's fix that before anybody does." But instead, I would prefer the planning board take a position where, is this something that could benefit globally the housing situation and also not necessarily have too high a detriment to impact on our village? You have to balance those things. But if it's always the people who already own the property who make the laws and do this such that other people can't come in, then the people will never be able to come in. So, I just like for you guys to think about it in both ways when you do think of this issue.
Thank you, Carolyn. I have a running list of things like this that come up that we try to tackle. Which ones are the priorities? So, absolutely, I will add to the list before we leave tonight and we can talk about it. So, thank you. Appreciate you bringing that up. Anybody else? I know what everybody online is here is for, so, okay. I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period. Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for the final plat of cluster subdivision proposal number 2021-4464 by Bear Properties LLC. Bear Properties LLC and Hunt Engineers are providing a final plat of a cluster subdivision for property parcel number 45.2-1-47.2, which consists of approximately 40 acres of vacant land between Craft Road and Plain. The final plat, along with details of the proposed two block lots, will be reviewed by the planning board. Welcome back. Thanks for being here. We do appreciate it. I understand the convenience of online, so it's nice to have folks. Yeah, so, I do know that at the last meeting, Cam, we talked about trails extensively. There were some other things that had to be discussed. And my understanding is that you and Mike and Brent and maybe some other folks meant to talk about them. So, did you want to mention anything, Mike?
No, I mean, I asked David to come here because we wanted to kind of nail down the two items you are talking about, the trails and the rec land. I just wanted to make sure we are all on the same page with this. Any of the other items are somewhat finite items that the engineers are handling. But I just wanted to make sure that we, like I said, we are all on the same page with this.
Okay. David, do you want to kind of fill the board in on some of the things that came up at the meeting that you guys discussed? I know there were some kind of new options that floated up, so.
Right, so, you know, Mike chimed in if I've got this incorrect in any way, but John Courtney, you know, after looking at the plans, came up with a proposal that, you know, that can be seen as a compromise with the paving trails issue. What he proposed was that we narrow the shoulder of the roadways throughout the development from five feet to four feet so that me, the developer, would save two feet of asphalt on the entire kind of linear foot of the roadway. And his idea was that that asphalt should be used on the rec paths and, or on the greenway trail, excuse me, greenway trail. And although we haven't, I haven't gotten the Hunt people to be able to really analyze it closely, it seems ballpark to be somewhat of an even trade. So, it's not something that I oppose. I mean, it's an even trade in terms of tons of asphalt.
Right.
Okay? When you're paving a road, whether you're paving it 28 feet wide or 30 feet wide and you have the equipment out there, it makes no difference whether the equipment is set at 30 feet or 28 feet, but you are saving tons of asphalt. So, but then if you're going to pave the greenway trail, then you have to have all that equipment go to the greenway trail. So, that is an added cost. But the material cost, you know, might be something I'm worried about. You know, that, you know, I haven't committed firmly one way or another. I guess I kind of like to hear your guys' take on it. Because narrowing the shoulder is a change. And I think some people might perceive it as a negative change. But, you know, no, because I'm not, until I talk to the Hunt people in San Beach, I'm not willing to commit one way or another. I'd like to get your input. And then maybe we could, based on that, I could make a decision. And I could go to the Hunt people and say, "Okay, adjust the plans accordingly."
Hey, Mike, how does that compare to the width of the roads in Lansing Trails Phase 1? Do you know? I don't know how wide the shoulders are there. I don't know if they're four feet versus five feet.
I don't know, Mike. I'll have to take a look at that.
My only question at the board trustees meeting was related to Shannon Park.
Oh, okay.
So, I asked how wide my street was, and my street is 26,
Okay.
which is smaller than 28.
Yep.
It seems plenty wide.
Yes.
Okay, so those are 26. John Courtney, those are 26.
Okay.
Um, good. So, actually, it seems a reasonable thing because mostly there are sidewalks also along every single road. It's almost, most of them.
So-called West Road.
Right.
And the Milcroft extension, but we weren't going to have sidewalks on the...
No, unless maybe in the future.
But you've got the trail that runs through the loop there. It's not a necessity that you have to walk on that road in order to, you know,
Get to the end.
get somewhere if you wanted to walk. Yeah, yep. What are people's thoughts?
I think it's a reasonable compromise. I, you know, I went over to Milcroft to look at the stone dust. However, and it has not been maintained at all on most of the properties. There's like one house, I think, had maintained it. I was recently on a walking thing with a group up near, on King Road near the hospice. And behind there is the, it was eight feet wide. It was a road of stone dust. It was fabulous, actually. That was fine. But it is everything, it's always about maintenance, let's face it, be it asphalt or stone dust. I personally don't like asphalt just aesthetically, but I can see the reason for doing it. And if we can come up with something that isn't, you know, arduous cost-wise in a compromise, I would be in favor of it.
I mean, I've run on trails that are stone dust. I mean, they're fine. I mean, I would prefer to see the asphalt because somebody who's been, has mobility impairment a few times, it's easier when you're in crutches. But it's, I mean, if Dave's willing to narrow the roads and and that asphalt, the trails, it'd weigh. I mean, I think it's a, we can compromise. We can work something out.
Actually, while I was at Milcroft, I saw, it was probably a grandfather strolling a kid in the road because, and I thought, "Oh, there goes my argument for stone dust, darn," you know? But, so, it's not just for walking and stuff. It's also for people with strollers and other wheeled things, I think.
Laura?
So, I actually went over to Milcroft too because I've never been in the neighborhood. And honestly, I didn't notice a difference. I mean, sure. I mean, I know what asphalt is, but I didn't notice a difference driving through.
But did you see the sidewalk trail? It was, no, see, that's the point.
You might not.
It was, it's on their yards.
Oh, no, I didn't. And I went really slow through there and I was...
Some of them, it was not even noticeable. That's...
They've ignored it. It's like, it's overgrown.
It looks, you don't even know it's there. It was a very narrow...
I did not notice it at all.
Probably the width of this, yeah.
Kim?
I haven't, did not have the chance to go over and look at the Milcroft situation, but this sounds like it might be, you know, again, without trying to visualize four feet, but a reasonable compromise. Asphalt does have its advantages, as Pat pointed out, the mobility issues, and it just may not require as much maintenance as the stone, the crushed stone or whatever substance we're talking about as an alternative. So, it sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I think, David, if, I'll chime in last, obviously, but I, you know, my preference, I think, would be, you know, to sort of go along with John's initial comment, to, you know, have that right width, have it be paved for, you know, for ease of maintenance and everything. And if you can make it work by, you know, making the roads a little narrower. It sounds like folks are in favor of that, so.
Might be traffic calming, I suppose, to a certain extent, too.
So, yeah, I mean, is that enough direction? And I think we're the same. We've been, you know, ever since the original application, right? We don't want you to run off and, you know, spend a bunch of money only to come back and say... Well, that's not what we want. No. So, I do think that hopefully that's enough information for you to go back and talk to Hunt and see. If it works out.
I suspect it will if there are some, an understanding of what's expected of us. You know, one thing that was discussed a little in the meeting was how changing the width of the shoulders affects the grading plan. My first inclination is, we're talking about a foot on each side of the road. Can we just leave the grading plan as is rather than have, you know, a pack that Hunt spent three days regrading, you know, a substantial part of the property? And it has to be also with, you know, what's expected as asphalt thickness on the trail. I think, Mike, you remember, I think John had talked about two and a half or three inches of asphalt on the trail.
Yep.
Which is less than a roadway.
Right, yeah.
That helps the trade-off.
Yeah, right.
In our favor, so, you know, if that can be understood. And then the one thing that, you know, occurred to me today is that I believe that, you know, a 28-foot-wide road doesn't really conform to the village code. I think the village code says 30 feet. So, I want some kind of assurance that a year from now, somebody doesn't say, "No, the code says 30 feet," and you've got a required road. And, you know, that would entail, you know, a bunch of signatures from the mayor saying, "You're going to stick to what you agree to now."
Is that right, Mike?
That would all get taken care of as far as when it comes to a resolution, we're all be in that agreement or whatnot.
Was Brent there when you were talking about reducing the... Okay.
Yeah, we were all in agreement that it was, for this particular subdivision, that the 28 feet would actually work.
And Brent didn't raise up any concern about, that's not the, no, we can't do it, or, okay.
And one of the other positives to reducing the, each side of the road by two feet is as you come off the road and you grade down to the actual culvert area, you have a one and three you have to grade. Well, if you come back farther, that can make that deeper. Makes it deeper so there'll be more cover. So, it's...
There are its advantages to...
Okay.
And then, Mike, were there any other, you know, I know a lot of the engineering things were kind of little things, but there are any that come to mind that...
I don't think so. Most of it was stormwater runoff and contour lines, which would be all handled as far as where the easements are going to be. That's, a lot of that has to do with the engineering. The other, the other issue was, you know, what was going to happen with the actual rec area? Because you had stated that your intention was the homeowners association would take care and maintain the rec area, I guess, the 6%. It's not that you, in your case, more than 6%. And that was another subject that we wanted to make sure that we had something on record that if that's what's, you know, the planning board does have some say in that. Because the planning board can, as per our, the planning board can require some other activities such as a maintenance agreement or whatnot so that they can be assured that these rec areas are going to be maintained properly. So, that's something that you and the planning board need to work out.
And when you're talking rec areas, which areas are...
I was going to, that's exactly...
It's the highlighted yellow piece. It's highlighted yellow areas.
But I will, well, see, I found that confusing because so much of that has to do with stormwater maintenance. How does that get to be rec land? I didn't understand that that was rec land. I kept thinking, "Oh." Well, that's highlighted because of that. And so, I'm thinking, well, so where is the rec land? How do we make that a rec land?
Rec land is what you have in the yellow.
No, but it's, it's almost, almost all of it also has stormwater maintenance associated with it.
But some of the, the stormwater maintenance is going to, is going to be all part of just the stormwater itself. You're talking about a maintenance for the rec area as the land around it. I mean, you can maintain the stormwater facility all you want, stormwater pond and whatnot, and never mow a thing around it. But the agreement has to, has to be two maintenance agreements there.
I didn't understand that this was rec area because I thought, well, this is all, you know, associated with, you know, by retention areas, stormwater...
Well, not, the majority of it is, not all, but the majority of it is.
Yeah.
And it's, just to be clear, too, there's a difference between rec land and things being dedicated to the village versus not.
Right.
And that has nothing to do with the forever wild area, which is in your north west corner.
Yes.
Yep, the actual...
So, it's like you said, these yellow things.
As for our subdivision, COA, David's required to set aside 6% of the plan. In this case, he set aside more than 6%.
And that doesn't include the forever wild up in the, right, the highlighted, yeah, the green area up there, which is, which is larger.
If there, you know, it should be some sort of maintenance area. That the pensions that they need in.
Right, and I think, right, and that would be the typical agreement, right? Is, you know, your intent is to have the homeowner's agreement maintain, or the HOA, maintain those lands and if they do, right? And if not, then the agreement at least lets the village step in to maintain them and, right?
If you were to asphalt the greenway trail, would you then consider dedicating it to the village?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That'd be...
The point. The point of asphalting it. Just wanted to be clear.
Any thoughts about, specifically more to the maintenance agreement that we're just talking about for the rec lands there?
No, I think as long as, yeah, we protect the village to keep it, but I'm not terribly worried about that.
And I mean, I, you know, if you've seen any of the other of your properties, I mean, they're maintained. It's not...
It's been, it's been general practice with subdivisions that the actual rec land be dedicated to the village. But that were cases where maybe we didn't have a park area or something.
Right.
We didn't have any access. I mean, we have a park right next to this.
Right.
Yes, it does, it kind of didn't make sense, I thought, too, to do that. It just isn't necessary, really. And I'm not sure we want to have extra park land to maintain, frankly, in that, because we have other options in that area.
Well, and to your point, you're right. It's not just, you know, a lot of it is for stormwater management, you know, there's not a, oh, there's no...
Baseball field. There's not a baseball field or something, right.
It's all part of, you know, that, maintaining that area, so.
We'll be maintaining the greenway trails if they're dedicated to the village. So, at least that part.
It's a part of it.
And that should, in fact, I think wasn't that one of the concerns originally is that we would have access to the stormwater things in case it was necessary. And so, that was part of what started the whole eight-foot-wide thing. Yeah. No, I'm comfortable with just a maintenance agreement.
Pat?
Yeah, that's one with me.
Laura, Jim?
I'm just wondering, what is the illustration with the green shading?
What?
Illustration with the green shading.
There'll be HOA maintained areas.
HOA property. And that would, that's what we're talking about, a maintenance agreement for that, right?
That expands beyond the...
Yeah, so it's really a maintenance... The forever wild area, right? We're not expecting the HOA to go up there and mow the forever wild area, right? It is, so specifically, the maintenance agreement would be for the yellow shaded area. But the green shaded area does include, you know, the additional, the additional properties there. Yeah.
Okay.
So, the yellow areas would be maintained by the HOA. And then, based on the discussion, the eight-foot-wide asphalt trails would be dedicated to the village.
Right. And then the village would all maintain those like we do with the other... Pretty much, but dedicated to us.
And then the maintenance agreement would just kick in if there should be some sort of reason that the maintenance wasn't done by the HOA to... Maybe making it unsafe or something in some way. Okay.
Okay. Is that enough then, David, for you to answer? Are there other questions or anything you had? With other points that you were just, right, I know there was something you brought up that really more engineering thing, things that the planning board just doesn't step into. It's really Mike and Brent, so.
Yeah, I think there are a bunch of little loose ends that hopefully John and Brent will kind of sign off on before the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
I know you weren't planning on coming, David, but I appreciate it because I wanted to get these two things just nailed down.
I'm all for it.
Greg, well, thanks.
Yep.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that the engineering meeting happened and we could have this discussion tonight. Like you said, kind of get stuff, keep moving along.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda is to close the public hearing for preliminary plat of subdivision number 2022-4621. This was the...
Dark Drive?
The subdivision we had deemed major that was over on the other side of 13 there by kind of in the lot, the area there on, dark behind...
Dark Drive.
Yep.
This is the Nick Williams one.
So, that's been rescinded. So, in this case, do we just have to vote to close the public hearing? That's it? And then there's no more action?
So...
You wanted to add in before?
No.
So, at this point, then, we have simply two lots, the original plus one.
Yep.
Okay.
And so, he had, the request had been to subdivide the big lot into...
Three, I think it was.
The big one. There would be five total lots. There's two now. There would be five total.
Yeah. He changed his mind for now.
So, could he come back between now and the next meeting and say that he just wants to divide the big lot into two?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions for Mike or comments about that?
Did we, did we open the public hearing last week?
We did.
Yeah.
We did. Do we have a preliminary plat to consider?
Uh, we had a, we did...
So, we had a sketch plan.
preliminary plat, but you...
Left it open.
So to speak, because Dick wasn't here.
He wasn't here. We asked that he come to tonight.
But the public hearing was open. I just thought it'd be cleaner if we closed it.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, I think.
I just want to make sure there's nothing, like, if you fail to take a vote or action.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess just...
Should we stand by?
It might take me too long to find it.
You can wait a second.
Checking out.
That if they have to, like, actually vote to disapprove the preliminary plat...
Oh, I was supposed to just ask the...
They never voted to approve it.
I know, but you can approve, disapprove, or approve with modifications as to a preliminary plat?
Oh, and so, but if it's been withdrawn? Did he do it in writing? Did he withdraw in writing?
Email said he was drawing his request for...
Okay, then just...
Then that should be okay, shouldn't it?
Yeah. Put it in the minutes that he sent, written across, drawing it, withdrawing it. And then you can vote to close.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Lisa. You start first.
I move that we close the public hearing for preliminary plat of subdivision 2022-4621.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Jim. All in favor? Okay. Next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4575. Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel number 46.1-6-5.12. We're seeking to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop. John Snyder, representing Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac, will review the proposed changes, which include a new entrance to the West Asad and a second floor for the new Cadillac showroom. And I know that we do have, I think, John and Bear online, so, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Would you want to start with anything, Mike, or...
John does exist. There's proof. We have him right on here. It's been a while. Been dealing with Bear, which is actually a pleasure. If you want to start out, it's been a little bit. If you want to go over this packet that you sent me, we can share the screen. You can go over some items. And then I'm sure the planning board has some questions. I know earlier this week, I can't remember what our forwarded questions from Brent Cross to you, Bear, or to John, I'm sure both of you got it. So, just to let the planning board know, there is some activity that Brent Cross is looking items over. I think they mostly retained the stormwater, correct?
Yep, that is correct. He had questions in regards to our SWIP. And our civil engineer is currently working on responding to those questions.
Okay. And I also, Bear updated the sign. Does everybody have a...
This, all this stuff, the sign, I mean, the square footage and...
Yeah, there's an updated version of all that that I tried... Yeah, there's, there's an updated version of all that that I'm trying to go through. I, I wouldn't mind seeing the planning board, you know, just pop up some questions and see if he's issued on a, John or Bear, kind of answer.
So I know when you did something similar for the Nissan dealership, obviously, that was a new dealership on a, on vacant land that we subdivided. How does, and so there were a number of zoning, what's the word I'm looking for?
Variance is needed.
Variance is needed, thank you. How does, and one of those was signage, obviously, looking at the signage here, how does the signage on this, I know there was a lot of back and forth with the other, you know, there was, there was an initial proposal that got denied, it got scaled down, that got taken to the BCA, it got approved, how does this compare to the signage process we went through, because I would imagine that we will have the same, you know, input and hold, hold true to the same values we did last time when we discussed signage?
Yeah, you want to take that one, Bear? Oh, yeah, absolutely, since you've been. Yeah, so, so, when, when we were reviewing the signage for this project in particular, the difficult balance that we have is that there is two manufacturers there, so trying to make sure that we meet the manufacturer requirements while also keeping in mind the, the spirit and the intent of what you, what you and the BCA had to offer during the Nissan project. So currently, there are more signs with this project, but the square footage is less than what Nissan was granted. I think the Nissan project was like 380 square feet of signage that was approved, and currently with the amendment to the one Cadillac sign, it's in 270 and change, so about a hundred square foot reduction over what the Nissan project had, that's partly due to the height of the building and trying to appropriately scale the signage, so it meets the manufacturer needs, gives plenty of visibility in the appropriate areas, and also provides adequate wayfinding for the different functions of the building, in particular, the collision center and the service drive for the customers.
And so, Mike, that, even though that square footage is less than Nissan, that would still be a variance, right, or it would be a request for variance?
It would be, it would still be a variance, 100 feet is the max, just a review with the Nissan, it was presented at 611 feet to the BCA, it was denied, and the, as, as Bear had stated, 380 feet or so was what it was settled on.
What other questions to, oh, go ahead, Mike.
No, I was just going to say, I, you know, I'm currently going through this, but this is, the sign, the signage on, that the, these gentlemen are proposing are certainly not as bold as what the Nissan facility has.
Mike, Mike, would you like me to share my screen and just kind of go through the images a bit, and walk it through with the board, or no?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, I, I turned sharing on, so you should be good.
Okay, perfect, let me do that.
But these pictures always look so beautiful.
Well, that's the other thing I will share, is also, thank you from, thank you from the last experience with Nissan and just providing us, you know, elevations and things like that, and images upfront, we, we very much appreciate that.
Yeah, of course, I wanted to take what we learned from the last process with you guys at Nissan and try to condense it and make it a little bit more streamlined and more enjoyable for everyone.
Can you zoom in just a little bit before you start going?
Oh, yeah. Yep, um, hold on, let me go into presentation mode, all right, I'll just. Is that any better?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so this first image that we're showing is from the corner of Cinema Drive and Uptown Road, going from left to right, you will see the, where the current caddy Cadillac showroom is, we will be doing a, essentially a one-to-one replacement, we're going to be removing that section of the building and putting an addition in that same spot, trying to maintain the same zoned, or the same setback, which will require a zoning variance. The intent is to try to go up two stories there, because we have some program needs where we need additional space, and that seemed to make the most sense, given the scope of work on the building. Moving across, you will have the Chevrolet showroom facing Uptown, or Cinema Drive, excuse me, right in behind that will be the entrance with, to the service drive, which you'll see in later images, and then tucked there in the back, you have your collision center. The intent is that we do want to do significant landscaping, the species have not been fully nailed down yet, we're hoping to get more accurate information to you guys regarding that in the following meeting, and as you can see, we will have some retaining walls in some areas to try to make the parking situation better, try to get it back away from, currently it's approaching over the property line, we're trying to get it back behind the property line, we will still need a zoning variance there, but we're trying to improve upon the situation that currently exists, and let me move to the next image. So this will be the view from Uptown Road down, going to get a nice new Cadillac showroom. One thing to note is that we will not be doing any Maguire signage on the Cadillac showroom itself, this was both a manufacturer requirement and also trying to limit the signage. Then, continuing on down, looking back up, you'll notice, again, that same Cadillac branding at the top, there is going to be a small Cadillac brand, which is included in the signage package at the entrance door, this was more or less for wayfinding, as the, all the customer, or the majority of the customer parking is going to be right in front of the building, so then that way it helps customers navigate to which showroom they should choose. Continuing down, here you get a better glimpse of the service drive being tucked up off to the side, again, due to unique grades on the site, there's going to be a significant amount of retainage, the intent is that those retainage walls will have some sort of wind rock or stacked stone applied to them, and off to the right-hand side, you'll notice that it's a different stone configuration, that's going to be larger armor stones, kind of like what you see on the, on site for that corner display, it's going to be those large boulders, the intent is we're trying to bring Nissan site across over to this site, so then that way both dealerships have similar components between them, then, and just another angle of that front, you will notice that we are asking for two pylon signs, I believe zoning only allows us to have one, the reason why we are requesting two is this is a manufacturing requirement, and hence why, also why the update on the Cadillac pylon sign, I goofed on the size, the size I initially indicated to you, because Cadillac is requiring their sign to be the same height as a Cadillac sign. And the, the display parking, well, where the display, yeah, the display parking, the game plan is that we are going to line the front of that with, again, more landscaping, and add in street trees into that area, both to try to help create a little bit more visual break while still having an opportunity to see vehicles and shield the building some, and also with the, the lighting on the site, that'll help keep us from bleeding off too much. Here is an image of the collision center, we're doing a little bump out here to make it so customers no longer have to go to the back section of the building to get to the collision center for their services, be able to access everything from the front of the building, and this also gives a good little glimpse, we are intending to put solar panels up on the garage and body shop roof to try to help offset some of our electric needs. This kind of just gives you a bird's eye view of everything that's going on in the site there, I'll pause right now and see if you have any questions before I proceed through the rest of the packet.
Good, Lisa.
Okay, so the lighting wasn't indicated, I didn't see any of the lighting indicated, so that.
There's light.
Is there?
Yeah.
It's not in these, not in these schematics, I don't see any.
If you, yeah.
Lights.
Oh, street lights, yeah.
Yeah.
The current ones are awful, I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, we're replacing the existing lights, yes, we did photometrics.
I saw that in the back, but I wasn't sure, and I saw the Cobra head kind of things, but I wasn't sure where they're going to be exactly, because do we actually have any?
Yep, so.
You look at the photometrics on that page, it actually has the light fixtures.
Oh, okay.
To where they're going to be in the building, yeah, so if you look at the left-hand side.
The 23.
There's the types, and then, yeah, you can see where the codes match.
And, and with this photometric plan, hold on a second, let me.
Can't, can't go out.
With this photometric plan, what's, the lights are keyed into the lights, excuse me, went too far, lights on the left-hand side.
Right.
And you'll notice that the south side of the site is the existing lights that was installed for the Nissan project, which I've indicated, any of those existing lights also in that table off to the right or left-hand side, and the new lights are also indicated, so we're trying to match the same aesthetic of the lights between the two sites, and we're also trying to be mindful of the foot candle requirements that we previously had on the Nissan project, and trying to make sure that we're not bleeding over the site, over the property lines, and hence we pulled this photometric together, then get them into the rendering, so that's hopefully something that we can add for the, the next go-around.
Okay, that was the only thing, I saw that here, but I thought, I don't see them in the pictures, because they distract, of course, a little bit from the pretty, don't they? And then you just answered, I wanted to be sure that I really saw the solar panels, I noticed them, but I didn't know whether that's, whether you're really making commitment to that, or it's just a wish?
Well, no, we, we are going to make a commitment to that, it's going to come down to a quantity, I don't know if it will cover the entire roof as rendered, that's going to kind of depend on what the engineers give us back on what's appropriate for this building.
Yeah, it would be very similar to what we did up on the roof of Nissan, which is, I believe, a two-meg system.
Okay.
So, it'll be very similar, Lisa, and, you know, we haven't made a final determination on that, it is somewhat dependent on what an assertive would give back to us in terms of rebates and possibly tax credits and that kind of stuff, because that's our world now.
Yes, so, now, I don't remember, is this part of the natural gas moratorium or not? As I recall, it wasn't for some reason.
On the other side of 13.
It is the other side of 13, that's what I thought. Okay, the one other thing is, is I did a drive-by today, and there was a delivery of cars, and they were not parked on Uptown, but they were parked right in front of the hotel, going the entrance to the trip. So, I just, I was wondering where we're at with some of that, that issue, and, and the turning radius, since Brent isn't here, if, if all of that has been resolved.
Yeah, we, we provided turning radiuses.
Last time.
Last time, and, you know, one of the, one of the conditions, or one of the site conditions that we wanted to improve on is the exit coming out of the site.
Nissan, yeah.
Onto Uptown.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that kind of helps us with that ability to get a vehicle in and around. As for the, you know, what happened today, you know, I will let Phil know, but, you know, they, frustrating from the owner's perspective as well, because they don't really have control over, you know, these trucking companies, you know, manufacturers just sign up with whoever to send the vehicles to a specific location, and Maguire does their best to get them on the site, but, you know, oftentimes that doesn't happen, so if, if it happens, I urge you to ticket them, because we do recognize it's, you know.
I would love to. I wish I had the authority, I would have.
Okay, then, Mike, ticket them.
I'll call our code officer up.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're doing our best, and, you know, we're trying to get them on our site.
Well, it looks very pretty.
I was going to say, I mentioned it before, but I really do appreciate you, you know, this is the second project, you know, in that same area, though, and so I really do appreciate you taking everything that, you know, we all learned from the first process with Nissan and, you know, applying that here at the very beginning, instead of all the back and forth we had last time, there'll be back and forth still, though, don't.
Don't.
Don't think.
What I'd like to try to do this time around also is engage with John Courtney early on, so that he also takes a look at our engineering drawings, to, once we got into construction last time, we had a lot of back and forth with John, and I, I really want to try to, you know, try to avoid that, and try to engage with John and have him review drawings through this process, so whatever that looks like, Mike, you know, I'm all ears, you know, if it's a meeting or whatever we need.
Yeah, I know there's at least one thing that, that Mike had been looking at in the plan, so. That might be worthwhile for you, you all to have, you know, to have an engineering meeting like we have been with other projects.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything to add, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, but there, there's nothing that I can't, I can't add if we have a, a slight meeting, there's a, I've got a couple of little things, I'd look over the photometrics, you know, we have a new lighting law that I'll send over to you folks, and you may have to tweak that a little bit, of course, the, the light panel had to be approved by the lighting commission, there's a couple other items that I've been reviewing with, with what Bear had provided me, as far as variances, they seem, they seem accurate of the variances that are going to be needed, and the last thing is, like I said, it could be handled later, but your fire, I have got a little bit of an issue, your fire department connection may, may require you to move that, but I can go through that detail during a private meeting we have with the engineers.
Okay, sure.
Did anyone else have questions about any of the, the packet they've gone through so far?
No.
Jim? I didn't have any questions about the material that's presented, I, I don't know, I guess we'll be having a discussion in terms of how is the square foot, proposed square footage of the signage, including pylon signs, square with what the building's standards are, but I'm assuming that's a discussion to be had in the future.
Yeah, Mike, Mike said he was doing some additional calculations, I saw him highlighting stuff earlier, so.
And well, yeah, and then, it's unlikely that they will be able to meet the 100 square feet, we know that already, so.
It'll go to BCA like last.
Yeah, it'll go, it'll be a BCA issue.
Yeah, I mean, as I look at these nice pictures, it seems that even without the pylon signs, it's pretty clear what this is.
Yeah.
And what, and what the brands are.
For a small corner, there are a lot of, a lot of signage here.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we do have two manufacturer brands that we have to meet their requirements, franchise requirements, yeah, and we, we went with the smallest signs that they could.
So I am, I am curious, though, why does it have to say Maguire three times? So if you look, on the big sign, it says Chevy-Maguire, which makes sense, right, your main sign, but then you've got Maguire over next to the service entrance there, and then you've got Maguire under Cadillac, I mean, does it need to be there three times, like?
The Maguire is required by, at each one of those locations, the one at the Chevy entrance to the left, that is their requirement, is to always have it on the left-hand side, yeah, each one of those locations is a requirement.
And just, just something to note, what's unusual with the Cadillac in comparison Mm-hmm, and ju- just as something to know, uh, what's unusual with the Cadillac in comparison to their, uh, McGuire projects that we have worked on, uh, is that they, uh, they are requiring no, uh, McGuire signage on the building itself, but they are requiring it on the, uh, pylon, which is atypical for a manufacturer.
I like that better.
I was gonna say.
I think that's a very nice, I like that much better, actually, because I think we went through this, um, actually, Lorraine, with how many Maguires do we need?
Yeah, yeah, if the rest of you keep calm, because we've asked the question.
I was gonna say, um, so I suspect that what they are is, but, but you know, I, I will say that I struggle with what these manufacturers require versus what we want. I still struggle with that, and I don't, you know, I wanna see me anti-business or anything. But again, with, especially in today's world where somebody just Googles, where's the Cadillac dealership, or where is the Chevrolet dealership? It seems a little over the top to me, but.
Yeah, and it's not like that, that corner is not, I mean, that corner's not that big, right?
Well, and then you're gonna add streetlights to this, and it's.
And you've got all of these greenage here, and I mean, it, I mean, it looks really pretty.
Does look.
And it'll make that corner look really nice, but the corner's still not that big.
So I would add to.
The signs overpower the building, basically.
The, so I would add about the streetlights of, there will be, um, uh, in the image that I'm currently displaying, on the cinema drive side, there will be one streetlight further, uh, like in front of the building, essentially.
Right.
On the uptown roadside, given the light that's gonna be casted from the showroom, there isn't gonna be, uh, 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 light posts there, given the fact of the light coming out of showrooms. And then also trying to make sure we're not bleeding over the property lines. Um, we made the choice not to have the, uh, additional lights to make it too busy on that side.
Could, um, are any of these, which sign, which, which of these signs are lighted signs?
So the Cadillac sign will have the emblem and the lettering itself is lit. Uh, none of the backfield is lit.
Which Cadillac sign? The one on the building or the one on the pylon?
The, the one on the pylon. Uh, so it's, it's just the emblem, kind of like what happened up at Nissan, it's, uh, or at least on the building side. It's just the emblem. Um, then for the Chevy pylon sign, uh, they are lighting the blue portion of the field. Here, let me go down to the signage.
Okay, now, okay.
Yeah, so on the Cadillac sign, it's just gonna be the emblem, letters themselves. And then on the Chevrolet sign, it's going to be the blue field, and then just the white letters of the, uh,
Chevrolet.
Or the McGuire name.
Obviously, time clock to the same requirements that we were at at Nissan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you told us last time on the plans which ones were lighted and which ones were not. So that we knew clearly in writing.
Yeah, I would, I would say, if you can, is it, is it on there and we just missed it, or could you call it out on the plans?
No, no, admittedly, uh, I forgot to add that detail, but I'll be happy to provide that.
Um, also, you know, I know this comes more into photometrics and things like that, too, but, you know, the discussion about, you know, dimming the lights, um, after hours, that's all part of the, you know, part of the lighting law and everything like that, that, that we can discuss when we get there.
Yeah, we will, we'll, we'll have a digital, um, lighting system, which will control its time clock. It'll, it'll turn off.
And, and, and Mike and others, too, we're considering certified services in collision center. Those are wayfinding, as opposed to
Well.
signage or not. It, it's very similar to, you know, I think what we did to Nissan, but is that right, Mike? Certified service and collision center would be more wayfinding than, it's not really branding or anything like that. You're muted.
I, actually, I interpret those as part of your signage, your, your, your other was, would be like entered. Basics off the directional signs would be the kind that don't count.
Yeah, to, to that point, that's kind of was our understanding as well. Um, I would just ask of the board, or when it comes to signage variance, that the idea is, uh, the service functions separately from sales, essentially, and same thing with the collision center. So it's kind of looking at as it's three, three businesses under one roof and making sure that the, uh, customer, when they enter the site from the driveway, that they can, uh, clearly navigate to which section that they, they need, uh, attention at.
Other questions for anyone?
No, no parking signs or any of that sort of thing are, are gonna be used for way, those are the true wayfinding, but they.
A- as of right now, uh, no, given the fact of all the main functions where customers are acting with the building are all gonna be on cinema drive side. Um, that's why we were going for the building signage as opposed to, uh, wayfinding on the, uh, the campus. Because it seemed easier from a, a visual standpoint.
Okay.
Okay, um.
So what's next?
Was there, is there anything else in, in the pack? I know there's other stuff, but is there anything else in there, John or Bear, that you wanted to bring up or go over in general tonight?
I think y'all, uh, kind of, um, noticed and put this list together of variances that we're going to be needing. Um, again, the intent is the Cadillac existing, or the existing Cadillac edition, um, or bump out, uh, currently does not meet zoning. Um, and the intent is that we want to keep it within that same threshold within a foot. Um, all the other zoning requirements that we are going for are improvements on current, uh, current non-conforming conditions. Uh, signage obviously is, uh, its own thing, but we were trying to be very mindful of what, uh, what was approved at Nissan in that process and trying to limit, uh, at least the area, given the fact that the manufacturers are requiring a lot of signage. We're trying to, we're trying to tone down the sizes as much as we possibly could and get their approval.
Uh, okay, uh, so what is next, Mike?
Um, I just emphasize that the planning board, you know, take a look at the landscaping plan and review that, because that'll have to be approved. Um, the lighting, uh, John and Bear, I'll go ahead and, um, see if I can schedule the lighting commission and take a look at your lighting plan. Uh, in time, I'll send you our new lighting law, so you can compare what has to be tweaked or whatnot. I do believe, as we spoke, that we should have a, uh, uh, engineering meeting with, I, I say engineering meeting, but, you know, remember us, John Courtney, and the three of us, um, to take a look at, uh, some finite points. I know John will have some, uh, questions for me. And the last thing is, um, is, uh, you have mentioned, I'll review the variances and make sure that they, uh, that you actually need one for that, and I'll also review that, uh, that parcel, which I did when Nissan came in there, to make sure there isn't a variance already intact.
Okay.
Okay. Then I guess we will, if there's no other questions, I guess we will see you at a future meeting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like the next item on the agenda is what Mike has been waiting for all night.
Review proposed 1203 law changes.
Planning board will review proposed changes to New York State 1203 Uniform Code to be adopted by the Village of Lansing. Oh, Mike disappeared, that's how excited he is.
Oh, there he is. Tell us.
Tried to slip out, right?
Yeah, snuck out the window.
Just kinda hide the, or hard to hide 250 comments. Um, we talked about 1203?
Yes.
Okay, as I had mentioned, uh, this is a requirement New York State has, uh, tweaked, so to speak, the 1203, which is the basis for, uh, zoning in New York State. Um, and also, as I had mentioned in the last meeting, Natalie painfully went through this. And we have some changes, um, from what we have right now. I mean, Natalie, you made all the changes that were, I don't know how to put it, I mean, there, there were like, some of them were minor changes, there's really only.
Some are minor, um, things that I can remember that were more changes are the things that a building permit's required for. Um, there's a rogue two. And then the certificate of occupancy, or operating permit was a big thing. Yeah.
The big thing for the operating permits is, uh, you didn't need an operating permit unless you had an asse- The big reason you need an operating permit is if you had an assembly area that was over 100 people. If that was the case, then you had to have a fire inspection annually.
Oh, okay.
New York State has joyfully handed down to us, now they are requiring any assembly area that's over 50.
Employees?
Fifty, uh, for your occupancy.
Oh, for, oh, I see, okay.
But they added in a little tweak in there, and they said that any building that has an occupancy, an assembly area over 50. So if you take, for example, Borg Warner, which may have a kitchen area that's over 50, we have to inspect the whole building annually. So this is a big increase in what Brian and I do. Um, mainly Brian handles a lot of this. Brian, Brian's excellent. I think I've said this before on the planning board, Brian Quadrati is excellent. Um, but this is going to stress out his time a little more, that I'm going to end up helping him do this. Eventually, we will get into a system where it'll be, it'll be just fine, but doesn't matter how you look at it, it's going to be added time to have to go do this.
Yeah.
Um, because before, for example, the mall, if you had an assembly, like the food court, um, we had the operating permit, we'd have to go in there each year and check out the food court and make sure everything's fine. Now we have to do the whole building annually, so it makes it quite a bit of an increase now. That's the big, that's the big boy in this change. Everything else, um, if you read through it, will probably make you drool.
Well, I did, I did. You're right. I thought, oh, I started reading and I thought, oh my God, I did not think, I didn't allow enough time, because I didn't deal with this until this morning. And, but I did have some changes, just format changes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because every time that we mentioned subdivision, perens, A, B, C, or D, it was lowercase, and yet there aren't any lowercase. They're all upper, so that when you say certificate of occupancy, show me, um, the document pursuant to subdivision, perens, lowercase b of this, of section 75.8, and I go to 75.8, and there are no lowercase Bs, they're all uppercase Bs. So I think we need to change that throughout. Then there, it was inconsistently handled, let's put it that way. There were some, but they were, majority of them were lowercase, and the majority of the document is in uppercase, so. That was one of them, I, I found your rogue two. And I think there was a, um, oh, I wanted to ask, so it says, under code 75.4A, it says the office of code enforcement officer is hereby created. Was it not previously created?
No, it's, it's just a full, we do the entire section.
So, okay.
Not everything is new. But the red line is unruly, so.
Okay, then, yeah, this rogue two. I wanted to ask when it's this building permits and it's, what happens when somebody, like, remodels a kitchen or a bath? Is that? Does it only get, does this only apply if there's electrical and plumbing stuff, or how does that work?
The, the main rule that you go by is if you have, whatever someone is, uh, proposing, if it requires you to use the actual unified code, and it requires a building permit.
Oh, I see, okay.
If someone is taking, um, say they're changing their floor, or they're changing the wall coverings.
And that's nothing, yeah.
Nothing to do with.
But I mean, if somebody guts their house or kitchen.
Something down to the studs, then, yeah, I mean, you're.
Then you're, then it's, okay. There was one thing, too. There was a constru-, uh, we're a construed, it was supposed to be construed. It said constructed or something, just a minute.
Can I add something while you're looking at?
Yeah.
With the operating permits, we did kind of do a self-inflicted, self-inflicted pain, so to speak. We added into the, uh, operating permits any buildings that are declared to be R1 or R2, which are going to be your hotels, which are going to be your multi-unit facilities. And this was done specifically because we were having issues with some of the multi-unit facilities. And now we will be required to go in every year to go through the building.
So you have to go through that building, you do have to enter each of the.
Except for, no, the private areas, we cannot have. But we can, uh, do the ground.
And areas.
So just to clarify, those of us who live in an apartment, you're not gonna be coming into the apartment every year.
Yours, you probably will.
You all want to after one time. No, the reason, the reason I ask that is because a number of, um, it's been quite a while, maybe 15 years, I don't know. We were told, the residents were told, in Lansing West Apartments, that the, I guess the fire, fire inspector or something was actually gonna come in all the apartments to check out the alarm. That, that, that only happened maybe once or twice, and then, then I think it was delegated to the maintenance staff, who are very conscientious about keeping up with that and the batteries, but.
Yeah, it, it's the same as if it were a separate residence or whatever, each, your residence, we're not allowed to come in unless we're either invited or we see them in a danger. So if you have, say you have a complaint that, um, you're fired, the smoke detectors aren't working, and, and the maintenance won't do anything about it, then you call and have a complaint. At that point, I can't enter your building.
Right, because I would want you to.
Because you want me there, but we cannot just go through randomly and go through the hallways there, well, simply.
Technically, yeah, well, that's, but technically, you know, the landlord owns the property and, you know, we just rent.
Well, but, but you have rights to not.
You would think, but I, I do remember this was a source of contention, you know, it was about 15 or something. So I just wanted to make sure this, this hasn't raised its head, I guess.
No.
Okay, of entering individual apartments.
All right, I have me busting in now.
Okay, I'm, I'm page 7514. At the very top, D, was there supposed to be a chapter reference there? All of the others had a chapter reference.
I'll check, I'll check.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Can you believe I actually didn't read this like I'm on? And then on the next page, the second line, two dwelling, it's units instead of unties. I know, isn't it pitiful? It's pitiful. Get away.
It's helpful. I'm like hour five doing this. I just don't stick out.
Well, and then I had spacing issues and stuff, but I don't know how I, but, okay, so then I really got stuck on this one. 75.17, C1. So the code officer may accept the OFPC inspection, provided that the code officer satisfies themselves that the individual perform. Can we reword that somehow?
I hate them from the thing, but I can rework it.
I think that is just so weird.
I don't, I didn't want to genderize it.
Is satisfied? Can't it just say is satisfied?
Sure.
I want, I don't want, I want to stay away from the themself, himself, herself. She selves, his selves, whatever. I think it would be better to just, okay. All right, I think the last.
In New York State, that one.
Yeah, well, I asked them to number, to put revs on their seeker changes, too. And then on 75.19, B, nothing in this section shall be, it says constructed, it should be construed, I'm assuming. And then like I said.
Lisa is out pooping you.
I don't know, she hasn't had her turn yet.
That's right, yeah, coming for me.
Now I'm embarrassed that I didn't. I was, I think I got stuck on Sugar House, I think.
I know, what? I know, that was pretty interesting, is why is that in there?
Because they put it in there. Because Sugar House is used throughout.
I know, I was gonna say, I'm sure it is, but it is kind of funny.
I know, I was like, where are we living? I mean, like, where's there a sugar?
Well, New York does have a fair number of maple.
Yeah, yeah.
Sugar ring.
Adarantex.
Yeah, no, we, I think we're like, what, the third or fourth in the country, I don't know. Something like that. I'll just give you mine, where all the subsections that I had, the lower. I'll just give you mine, where all the subsections that I have, the lowercasey, should I give it to you?
Sure.
Would that be easier?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as you didn't slander me in there somewhere.
No.
Fred Reddell on there?
I guess, I remember him saying something, but I didn't realize that this was your document or I probably wouldn't have.
Well, the thing is.
I know.
I mean, it was.
I can see that. And pretty, well, this is interesting, but it's.
Can you imagine what it would look like if I had done it?
Any other feedback people have on it?
No, I think most of it, we didn't forget.
What do we have to do on this?
No, no. I think Lisa took care of it all.
Yeah. If you can all agree that Natalie will make the changes, I'd like to have you go ahead and approve this to send to the Board of Trustees, because there is a.
Oh, we have a deadline before year end. Oh, yeah, and we're running out of time, especially because they know they have meetings on Mondays. The first Monday of every month's a holiday of some nature, so.
So do we?
Yeah, because it was very nice, it was very nice of New York State to send this to us last year and then make changes in May and then still leave.
Keep the deadline the same.
Do we want to look at it again after Natalie does it or approve that we, or vote to?
Trust.
Fine with whatever decision you guys make.
Well, it depends on when she might have time to get to it, I guess.
I can do these changes tomorrow.
Okay.
We meet again on the.
November or something.
It's going to be, it's going to be tight if we meet again.
Really?
And approve it then. Is that the start of the trustees? That's good, trustees, they have one meeting where it goes to them that they set a public hearing. And then if there is questions or whatnot, then it could go a couple of meetings after that. Now we're getting into Thanksgiving, Christmas, and who knows whatever else the Board of Trustees take off.
Why don't you recommend it on approval of the attorney and chair? So Mike Baker can look at it.
I was, I was, somebody should take just one last pass seriously. You know, it just always, you just never know.
Somebody else.
Because you're not, they find things that you missed this time.
Well, of course.
You know that happens.
The more things show up.
There's another one. No, that's fine.
But I mean, I think the intent is all, so there's nothing major.
Have a choice.
What?
So we don't have a choice, I mean.
Yeah, no, I mean, the content is the content.
The content, right, yeah, we can.
So we move, so what is the motion? We move, move to recommend to Board of Trustees based on final approval of village attorney and whoever you does, and to the chair. So moved.
Motion by Lisa.
Second by Pat, all in favor? Thank you very much.
I'll read this as soon as it's sent to me. Okay. Next item on the agenda is other business. The first item there is a review of proposed local law amending subdivision.
Oh, yes. I think we're good.
I think we're good.
I think we're good. Recommend this as well.
I was going to say, unless anyone has any feedback about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to propose, or to, yeah, propose to the Board of Trustees the change to the law amending subdivision.
Motion by Pat. Was that second by Jim?
I thought I saw a hand, maybe not.
Maybe I'm mad and you think so.
Okay.
Okay. Motion.
Second by Jim.
Switched his arm. That was Pat to Jim.
I guess I shouldn't go to Lenny.
I swear, maybe, maybe it was the pen and my sanders. Jim, no. Okay, next item is the discussion of the post. So Rayla.
I have done nothing.
I went on vacation, so I haven't do anything since last meeting.
And I didn't either.
Next Sunday, or we'll pick a date, Carolyn, Lisa and I will offer something for the three of us to take a look at.
Okay, that would be great.
Will you say next Sunday could be one of those?
The following one, not this Sunday, but the following, people are free. If not, we can find another date. So it would be, no, November 5th, no, November 6th.
Right, what time do you guys need to get together?
11ish or so. I'll send, I'll send an email to the two of you.
November 6th, we're looking at.
Yep.
Okay. Daylight saving time.
Yes.
So.
And then we will have something. And then we'll have something, I'll make sure that it is adjusted for our daylight savings.
Yes. You want to know what?
I mean, we usually go to like Ithaca Baker, Ithaca Coffee Company, so yes, they have those things there.
Help yourself.
Help, yeah, I was going to say.
We don't get paid enough.
To bake?
No.
Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to mention over there, like other business? I know, have a chance at the end here.
I had something I wanted to be fortunate.
The trustee report first and then all.
Oh, yes, we certainly can.
Trustee report.
I saw your hand that time, see, there we go.
Yeah. Okay, well, the October 17th trustees meeting started at 7:30 and then the village conference room here was dedicated to Don Hartil, who was mayor for many years and in other capacities for the village. So the meeting was temporarily adjourned while people socialized and had refreshments, zoomed at 8:00 PM, and then opened and closed a public hearing regarding the proposed updates to the Greenway plan. And then the Greenway, the updated Greenway plan was approved. And then now, more germane to the work of the planning board, they reviewed the planning board's recommendation of an escrow because Eric Getzman failed to meet deadline and with respect to the development. And the Board of Trustees voted to accept the planning board's recommendation of an escrow. The amount was $38,700. It's an escrow to ensure that the foundation of buildings, and I didn't get it done, and 14 are completed. John, and I didn't write down how, but John Courtney explained how the village came up with the $38,700 figure. Did mention that it costs $70 per foot to put a fence using prevailing, prevailing wages because it's a public works job, and $3,000 for soil stabilization. So the Board, Board of Trustees passed a motion to require an escrow for $38,700. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:23 PM.
23 minutes. You have it off the top of your head, Mike? Is that, this has been funded, do you?
It has not been funded, you waiting.
The agreement has been sent to John Lee for a review.
Yep, then he's got, I agree, well, he's got, what, seven days after he signs.
Once it's signed, it is seven days.
Eric was at the meeting, as I remember.
I don't think he said anything.
Actually, I was going to say that, but yeah, he was present, but he didn't really have a response to the vote.
I assume he was there for the dedication.
Well, I think he was. He was there at 7:30 and he did participate in the, I guess, congratulations celebration of the, for the dedication of the former mayor.
Thanks. We'll start with you, Lisa. Anything else you'd like to bring up?
Well, I think several of us have received this mailer from Lansing Meadows, which is now called Blue Heron Patio Homes, as everyone has probably seen his new sign up front. One of the things that's been bothering me about this is that he has on here, there's a mailbox, one mailbox, one lone mailbox, 129, in front of the whole development. And he references it here, but my recollection is that is not correct, it's not an Oak Crest mailing. How does he get to this? How does he get to 129? And how does he receive mail there? I thought it was Blue Heron Way and the buildings all were supposed to have, there was supposed to be some sort of mailbox system. And where is his design for that? We've never looked at that.
It is Blue Heron Way and each, each building in each apartment does have lettering to go for, each building. The first building, the farthest building is 2.
Right.
And like I had said before, it goes 2, 8, 14, 20, 26, and 32, only because we did that because subdivision was a hot topic at the time. And so we needed addresses that were, had some separation to it.
Right.
But as it is now, the buildings, for example, 2 would be 2A, B, and C. Where he came up with any Oak Crest address didn't come from my office.
Does, what is?
The mailbox that he did have out there was for, he was required.
Stormwater management.
Yes, he wanted to have that.
And that is now discarded at the other end, this end of the driveway, kind of in those, that rocks that are.
An address for Swift.
There's just a tossed in mailbox.
Yes.
So what is the post, who, how is this allowed? I don't understand this.
As far as that mailbox, it ain't.
Yeah, how does that?
It's not. I'll have to talk to him about it, say that's, I was never assigned, I never assigned it unless it was assigned before I was here, and that's, I doubt that, yeah.
And the other thing is, so he has temporary certificate of occupancies?
Just for one building, building 2.
Just for the one building? And I think I've asked you this before, so that if you issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, it's because there's something, it's not a, usually safety at that point, it's so that anybody there is safe, it's just there may be other things that just aren't quite finished?
Yeah, some of the more common ones are, the lawn's not established, we need asphalt for the sewer locations of the traps.
Okay.
And the vents.
So.
Things, something might not be painted outside, just something that's not life threatening.
But, so, and then he has how long, or somebody has how long to remedy that?
It's maximum six months.
And if, if, so I've been thinking about this, so, because of the history of this project. So let's say there are some things left open, certificate, temporary certificate gets issued, six months comes, they haven't been fulfilled, but now people are living in there. So then, who pays the price? The people living there are now kicked out? How does that work?
I can't officially kick them out. I can write him up as a notice of violation, in which he would get fined at that point.
250 day or whatever.
He would get fined at that point. I'd go through the same process of someone else, if anybody else does something against the unified code or the village code.
Okay, because I thought that would be just awful for these people to move in and then because of somebody not doing what they are supposed to do, these people get tossed out.
So this temporary certificate is for the ones? The one building only?
Just building 2, yeah.
Which has how many apartments in it?
Three.
And there's one person living in that one. And he's having an open house and showing people all these buildings to rent out and everything.
No, not all the buildings, only the, the one apartment in the middle, next to the one that's occupied. And he's got the whole apartment staged, so nice furniture, he's got it all laid out in there. He even had patio for it. Yeah, no, that's, that's the only one he's letting people go into.
Okay, I've just been wondering about that. I thought, oh my gosh, that would be awful if somebody, you know, in good faith, in there and then because he didn't complete something, which could happen, they would suffer.
We're a few months into that first, you know, temporary, right?
Yeah, and I still need, in order for him, I've said this before, that in other meetings, in order for him to get a temporary TCO for the other buildings, he would have to, at this point, he needs to provide the asphalt for that sewer, which he has, I think he gave to John Courtney today, and John has to go out and give a final inspection on it. If everything is, is fine, as long as I have everything else, I can issue it. At this point, I've been running through a lot of the expired building permits and sending out letters. One of them is his site plan, which he's going to have to run into, otherwise I won't do a TCO.
Okay.
To leverage it here.
Well, you won't find me disagreeing.
And since we're talking about it, there is still the landscaping escrow that needs to be addressed.
Well, oh, that's the other thing, he never finished his planting plan. And now, of course, he would say it's too late because of the weather, but he never finished planting his lilac shrubs and whatnot.
That's, there's a lot of moving parts there. I mean, that is also part of the site plan, that he can't close that out until all of this stuff's done, which is still going to end up costing him some money.
I think that's when I thought, oh gosh, you know, if he has to do that, then these people get thrown out. But as long as they don't get penalized for something that he doesn't do.
So he mentioned something to me about, because I talked to him that day, I was trying to be nice, that he was building the same type of places up in Skinny Allos. Now, whether he's actually doing that right now, or if he was just, just like he made mention, that he was going to put something in the Chinese restaurant that's been empty now for how many years?
Well, he's chopped down all the trees, preemptively striking, because, you know, he came and he was worried about the tree law, I think, so he just figured he'd better cut them all down first.
They're still laying there?
They are, I took some pictures, actually. I would say there are about five or six trees.
Why doesn't he sell off some of that property and get rid of it? I don't understand.
I just wish if he would trap them down, he would take them away. You know, that would be part of what I would think would be the deal, but.
Maybe you should mention that to him the next time he comes, Lisa.
I will.
Anything else?
No, my turn November for the Board of Trustees, I believe.
I can tell you for sure if you are.
Yes?
What year is this? Yes.
What year is this?
November 7th and the 21st.
Yes.
Okay.
Pat, I have to know.
I just had a question. Rumor I heard is Dick's moving out of the mall. Have you heard that?
That is the rumor I heard.
I think it's kind of official now, right? It's at the, it went to the, supposed to go to the Ithaca Planning Board?
Yeah, I mean, it's been in the papers, I don't know if that makes.
Where are they going?
The TOPS downtown.
Oh.
But I thought they were way further ahead than that, because I actually heard the Dick's rumor months and months ago, but I just saw the, the four-hour planning board meeting. Thank God, you guys are not in that planning.
Oh, boy.
The four-hour planning board meeting, I think that one of the, one of the topics was the Dick's. Their first phase or whatever.
I saw, have you watched it or you saw it in the paper?
No, I just saw the agenda.
Just trying to gauge.
The four-hour agenda.
A little crazy.
I feel like we got a four-hour meeting once.
Yeah, no, there was one time.
We had a couple.
Certainly it was 11, 11:30, got really close. I forget what it was even. Must not have been pleasant. I've sufficed it.
I think it might have had something to do with Eric.
I'd have, a good guess.
Because I think I was at that one, that went really late.
Wow.
Keeps us on our toes.
Lorraine, anything you want to bring up?
No.
She gave her report.
Mike?
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, there was some, I do have a question about the lighting.
Sorry. Yes.
Lighting law. Is there somewhere where I can read that? Because I've always had this, I have this thing about lights. I hate dark areas.
And I hate light.
I gotta have lights on.
There's lights, a light on. Layer and trespass on. It's in our code book.
In the book?
It's in the code now, yes.
I get home, I'll get that out and read it.
So actually, I do have a question about the tree law. Has it applies to Maguire?
Yes. So this is that question that we brought up.
How is this going to be fun, huh?
The special permit was open.
I don't know if you can.
I wouldn't do it for anything that's OREO.
They, yeah, they've been, they've been here.
I would only do it for new ones.